This meeting will come to order. Madam Recorder, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Venable?
Here.
Alderwoman Madison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Keith?
Here.
Alderwoman Retsch? Alderman Adams?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Recorder. Fellow citizens and members of the public, will you please stand with me for prayer? And immediately thereafter, following the Pledge of Allegiance led by Chief Keefe. Let us pray. Lord God, thank you for this day. Thank you for your all, your wonderful blessings, and thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for everything, Lord. All you've done for us in protecting and keeping us safe today, Lord. Please forgive us all where we fail and sin today, Lord. Ask in all this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
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 Chief, if you would.
Attention, salute pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. You may be seated. All right, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. In recognition, proclamations, and awards, we have none tonight. In recognition of distinguished visitors, you are the distinguished visitors, so I'd like to welcome you to our meeting. The first item on the agenda is Discussion and Action Meeting Minutes for February 7, 2023. Members of the Board, you did receive these in your packets, and I have laid across the table a copy for your review. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes you deserve?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Hearing none and seeing none, we have a motion to approve by Alderman Adams.
I second it.
Second by Vice Mayor Keith. Is there any further discussion? Madam Recorder, take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Venable?
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Keith?
Yes.
Alderman Adams?
Yes.
Thank you, Members of the Board. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Public Comments. Is there anyone in the audience or the public that would like to speak? Mr. Harmon, you are recognized.
Thank you. I just read this. I just walked in. Have you read this, Carol?
Uh-uh.
I want you to read this.
I'm the last city reporter.
Would you mind a step back to the podium, Mr. Harmon? Thank you so much.
By the way.
I'm relatively harmless. Relatively, I say.
Thank you, though.
Anybody read that?
I didn't know it until today, till...
Have you read it? Anybody read this?
What's on Blackwater Bill?
This is pitiful. You know it. You knew it.
Did you know about it? I didn't know anything about it.
We were just informed of this.
Three months ago? Ninety days? It took the state ninety days to inform you of this? I don't believe you. I do not believe that.
I just found out. A citizen called me today. I didn't know it.
Oh, you said you hadn't read it before?
No. She told me. I was told. I didn't see it.
I sit down here, Ms. Payne handed it to me. I've been drinking this thing. You believe that? Our citizens have been drinking this water. Do you know about it?
I don't know.
You want to look at it?
I'd like to, yes.
I'd be glad for you to read it.
I had no idea.
I want you to look at it, too. I'm really upset about this.
Mr. Harmon, you just have a couple of minutes left.
I understand that. You keep my time.
Please.
As a result, lead and copper in our water. It's been there for three months.
Oh, no. No, how?
December 1st, 2021.
Oh, my God, that's been over a year and three months.
Mm-hmm.
And our city manager didn't know about it? Our Alderman didn't know about it?
I sure didn't.
No. I didn't know. And I've even asked several times, you can ask them, what's wrong with my water? It doesn't taste good. I keep getting infections. What's the problem?
Is no one alarmed about this but me?
I'm alarmed. I drink a lot of water.
I do, too. I was told to by my doctor.
Mr. Harmon, this will be covered.
Oh, Lord.
This will be covered.
This will be covered.
Why wasn't it covered a year ago?
Mr. Harmon, this will be covered. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
I'm not through. I got another minute here, too.
Okay, please.
You two, everybody here. When you got three or more of you together, it's called a quorum. You're not supposed to be together. When I was on the board, Billy Wells, every time he saw me and Melvin King talking together, he'd say, "Mr. Harmon, you got to remember the sunshine law." Every time, he brought it my attention. Anytime you're together, and it's not a meeting in this building, you're breaking the sunshine law. Do you know that? Am I wrong?
Mr. Harmon, sir, your time has...
Time's up. I'm not wrong, am I?
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Malone, you are recognized.
I think that's going to be a good act to follow, so I don't know.
Yeah. Please state your name and address.
He was Jerry Malone, 372 Smith Street. I try to go out and talk to new citizens and people occasionally, you know, and find out what's going on, and just wanted to say that I talked to a businessman, and we end up, didn't know him, but we end up, we had a lot of mutual friends, and he's moved up from Florida and been here thirty years. But he told me that he was getting ready to expand his business into manufacturing by a million dollars.
Wonderful.
And that Mr. Broles had been really helpful to him. Now, for what that's worth, I don't...
I know who you're speaking to.
It is a comment, and actually, I didn't know him, but he said he was expanding. But I thought that was great. He was getting help, and he's got a business to expand in Bluff City. Okay. On the museum, one thing I'd like for somebody on the board to take a hold of and maybe coordinate it, maybe Sharon, and I've talked to Sherry, is to do something with the recognition, we'll just say, mayors, but mainly Irene and Billy, since they were the first black mayors of the state of Tennessee. It's a big accomplishment and stuff. And I would like to see something put up recognizing this, but also maybe a list of all the mayors that had been over the years, and maybe the police chiefs, possibly. Just something we can, it's just something to think about. We start, we can plan it, maybe, and then work it into the museum. I think it'd be really, really nice to do that. We've moving on, but we did get a cast iron stove, kitchen stove, from people in Bluffville, so we're going to get Jeff's momma to help us learn how to cook on it, because I'm sure she probably still remembers she's a good cook on it. We did find a dental chair in the basement. It was a dentist years ago from Bluff City, moved to Nashville, and then I think when he retired or quit or something, the chair, his dental chair, ended up back in Bluff City, so we're trying to redo it. Calvin Clifton, it's our engineer part there, he, through his family, they had a one-horse buggy that we acquired from the eighteen hundreds. He'd been, his great-granddad, he'd been from the eighteen hundreds, so we've got that. We have ordered, or in the process of order, we've ordered, we sent them money, in other words. We're building a diorama that's ten foot long, six foot wide, that starts with the Virginia line and basically goes to Kingsport, showing the mountains, rivers, roads, railroads, and all the historical places of interest, up and down that section. We have acquired a moonshine steel.
Oh, my gosh. Come back here.
What's on this is, we're pretty sure, there's no way of getting all the documentation, it's a last steel that Popcorn Sutton built, and he's kind of the godfather of the moonshine business. And the stories behind it, from who, he built it for a close friend. It's in Nashville, and it ended up, and there's a bluegrass country star, Raymond Fairchild, ended up, so we got it from his family. But I'm working with some people, about four corporations. Hopefully, we can get this really off the ground, maybe talking to a couple of them and the corporation people that do the show on Wednesday night, The Moonshiners, maybe doing a documentary of that or something. And if it, we think if it goes and we get the recognition it's supposed to be with the history of it, of the thing, that we could more or less put Bluff City, a lot of people coming to Bluff City to shop and look and thing, and so I just wanted to kind of bring you aware of that. It's going to be a little while to do it, but appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Always good to hear from you. Anyone else in the public or in the audience would like to speak? Ms. Payne, you are recognized.
Carolyn Payne, 4818 Bluff City Highway. On the agenda tonight, you're going to discuss, probably a vote, on putting our comments before and after. It used to be three minutes. I'm going to propose tonight that possibly you make it five minutes before and after, for that for consideration, because some of us speak real slow, got a lot to say. And also, the videos of the workshop sessions. I was under the understanding that they were going to be posted from here on out. It's still not on the website, and I hope that's part of the conversation tonight that you all have. If you have to, vote on it. You can't take somebody's word for it. And also, hopefully, you're going to get the status of we're right with hiring a city manager. That's it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Anyone else? Mr. Hunt, you are recognized.
How are y'all?
Doing great. Been a while since I seen you.
I just wanted to come down to date, and I wanted, and I'm glad Chief's here, because I'm going to ask for your all's help along with Chief's. But we have got to do something, and Chief's working on part of it. But Lakeview Drive in Weaver Branch has not turned into nothing but a gateway to hell of drugs, speeders, and everything. Excuse my French, but that's what it is. Now, I don't know, me personally, being a resident, and Robin, they live right there as well. I think the gate coming out of the campground should not be opened to Lakeview Drive. That is just easy access of trafficking that we don't need in our town. We need some speed bumps on Lakeview Drive. I've thrown paintbrushes, cleaning rags, dog toys, everything to get them stopped, and they're not slowing down. I had to go visit a family last week. The dad confronted me because I stopped his kids, but like I told him, I don't want you to get the call, hey, your kid's is dead. They wrapped around with a tall beard. Also, another thing, that kind of goes along with what I mentioned before, I think we need to put something in place to where if you are renting your house, and it's in Bluff City limits, and there is known drug traffic or charges there, get them out. It should not be permitted. I know you can't do anything on the homeowners, but renters, I think we should crack down and say, look, you got to go. There's a lot of rental properties. It changes hands a lot. I love the show Yellowstone. I don't know if y'all watch it, but one of the greatest comments ever, and it hit home. Small town with big problems turns into big hail. So, I'm not fussing at y'all. Good to see you. I'm just asking for some help, some issues that really need to be addressed. And I know we've talked about it before, me and one of my neighbors, we have agreed to, we will help pay for the speed bumps if we can get them put in, because right there, where our driveways meet, something bad is going to happen. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Please, sir.
If you wouldn't mind, state your name and address.
Sure. Steven Seper, 339 Lakeview Drive, Bluff City. Concerning the lead and copper, the water, is that still going on? Are we still under violation?
I will be, if you would allow me, sir, in the mayor and town manager's comments, I'll explain that in layman's terms.
And can I also ask, who is responsible for that testing?
We are, and the state is.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Very good. Moving on, then, we'll move on to the next Discussion and Action item, Ordinance Number 2023-001, an ordinance amending the Bluff City Municipal Code, Section 1-102, concerning the Order of Business for Board of Mayor and Alderman Meeting. This is a first reading ordinance. Mr. Fry, please publish your ordinance.
As you instructed me last time I drew this ordinance up, and the only difference is that we've gone back to the previous practice of the board of allowing two sections of citizen comments, three minutes each. This is ready for first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. Members of the Board, you have heard the ordinance published. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Keith.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Adams slash Alderwoman Madison. Which one? I'll yield to Ms. Madison. Okay, then, second by Alderwoman Madison. Madam Recorder, take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Venable?
I just want to ask a question. I do agree with Ms. Payne on the five minutes, because before, when Ms. Wells, I says, do you count, when it was five minutes before, or three, whatever, do you count while we're telling you our name and address? And the answer was yes. I don't think that's fair. So, I think five would be better.
Ms. Venable, this was discussed in workshop, and we're only returning to what we were at before we changed the ordinance.
I understand that, but how hard is it? To change it to two more minutes?
There's an easy fix to this. Don't start the time until they start talking.
I personally don't start the time until they start speaking. So, is that a stipulation of your approval of this ordinance?
If it's done that way. Because it wasn't before, because, I mean, I actually tie myself at home before I get here to see I can get it all in.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve. How are you inclined to vote?
I'll approve.
All right. Now, Alderwoman Madison, if you wouldn't mind.
Venable.
Alderwoman Venable, yes.
Yes, Alderwoman Venable, yes.
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Keith?
Yes.
Alderman Adams?
Yeah. Motion passes on first reading unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, my report. First of all, let me, before we get into the violation speech, let's go ahead and get an update from Madder and Craig. Unfortunately, they can't be here this evening, and I'll go ahead and publish the report I received today from Randy Beckner. Main Street Water Line is ninety-nine percent complete. Oh, as you were. Thank you. I moved on a little quick there. I apologize. Next item on the agenda is Quote from Hitchcock Memorals for the Wells Park Monument. Members of the Board, you do have that quote in front of you, and I did forward it to you in your packets. Just to explain to the public, just a second, please. Let me get back to my quote here. There it is. We do have a quote in front of us from Hitchcock Memorial for a black granite, solid black granite monument that would be placed at Wells Park in the position where the temporary sign is now, as you enter the park, down the concrete path onto the shelter. And everybody knows where the sign is now. We did attempt to obtain quotes from three separate vendors, one in Michigan, one in California, and then a local vendor, Hitchcock Memorial. Looking at the cost and lead time, the awarded quote was Hitchcock Memorial, and I will read you their narrative as follows. We have discussed this in workshop, by the way. The second quote is for a polished three, which means a beveled face, the front and the back are polished, and the sides are left rough rock pitch look, and the cost for this one will be $9,822 minus a 982.20 discount, which is a 10% discount. So, our overall cost, and this includes installation, would be $8,839.80. Again, the board and I discussed this in workshop, and we, it came away from workshop favorably. In hearing that, is there any further discussion or questions concerning this quote? The lead time for this project is approximately six months. The granite has to be imported, and once it arrives here to Hitchcock, the work will happen in short. We did select not a faceted memorial with thin granite on block or concrete, but we did select as a board the solid granite version, which should last indefinitely. Right. All right. Hearing and seeing, no discussion, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Keith.
I second it.
Second by Alderwoman Venable. Madam Recorder, take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Venable?
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Keith?
Yes.
Alderman Adams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I will issue a purchase order tomorrow to Hitchcock Memorals for this amount.
Thank you.
Now, now that we're straightened back out, thank you, Ben, we'll move on to my comments, and I'll start again on project updates, again, from Madder and Craig. Main Street Water Line, ninety-nine percent complete, just a little cleanup and repaving to do. The garage pump station for Spain, I'm proud to say, is ninety percent complete now, so we're back ahead of schedule. Weather delayed us there for a little while, the heavy rain, because we couldn't move the big excavator and the cranes down in where the pump station basin's going to be buried. It is buried now. Could get the equipment down there, but we're moving on. Practically where we are, and I'm sure Mr. Multry will cover this in his brief, is that we're just waiting on a couple of pump parts and railing to arrive, so we expect this project to be probably complete by the first April or so. Let's see. We have two grant applications that have been filed through the development district, and everyone's already been aware of this. They are valid grants, and that will be the grant of $806,100 for our water treatment plant improvements, and then a second grant for $398,300 to work with potentially a sewer project. Asset management, basically, we have been awarded $43,820 for the water system and $32,710 from TDEC, and this is basically an asset management fees that will go, and with TDEC's help, will go out and actually help us map our systems and gather data so that we can better find and coagulate all of the drawings we need from our system. So, this is a no payback for us. We don't have to match a grant or anything like that. It's called a forgivable loan. It basically just pays who does the survey, and then it's done. So, no money was spent from us to do that, and I'm proud of that. Okay, now, let's move on to the violation. I'm sorry, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not question time right now, if you would allow me. So, let me talk to you in plain speak about the violation notice on the water bills. We did, a couple of days ago, received a violation letter from TDEC for an offense, nothing punitive, that occurred in the last quarter of 2021. What occurred is practically this. We are required to test for lead and copper in the water system. That testing was conducted, and it did come out favorably, but unfortunately, during that time, we, as a town, did not report this to the public properly. We didn't report. Tests were fine, but as, this is systematic, and Alan can elaborate on this and help me if he needs to. We're required to do tests every day, pretty much, but there are benchmark tests that we have to do in the system. So, our violation is not punitive. It's not a fine or anything like that. All it is saying is that you did not tell the public that you did this testing in the proper manner. The proper manner is this. The public must be notified per utility bills or a letter distributed to the public. We, as this board, we cannot go back to January of 2021 or that last quarter. We can't. The only thing we could do is notify you now. What will happen is a letter, which was drafted by me today, hadn't even been socialized to the board yet, today, will be reviewed by this board, and it will be published to you, and it's got my name on it. And it's going to say, back in 2021, the test was done, there were no fines, your water was fine. We, however, did not follow the process of notifying the public, and that's all it is. We moved quickly to get this out to you after we received the letter from TDEC. That is it. No scare. Now, I will tell you, and I'll forewarn you now, I asked TDEC, and you put me on record for this, is there any other violations out there that we, as a board, we, as an administration, do not know about? And I will have that information soon. I'm actually meeting with TDEC next week. They're coming here, and we will find out if there's any time in our history that we have not reported something in a timely manner or anything else. Once I obtain that information and share it with the administration and this board, you will be notified in a timely manner. Again, this board cannot go back in time. It is my intent, if we have violations, to take that score to zero. I have 1,000% confidence in Alan Wiltrey and his team to go out and conduct the proper testing in not only collections, but water distribution and water treatment plant operations, 1,000%. But we cannot go back. So, that's where we are.
So, you're saying it was just a reporting error?
It, all it was. That's all it was. And when we received it, we responded immediately.
Please, this is violation.
But why would you have to send out a notification if the...
We are, you will understand, Carolyn, when you get the letter, because I elaborate in it, but we had, once I received a violation from TDEC, it came to me as a representative of our town, it was my duty to immediately inform you. So, the best way and fastest way that I could do that is to have it printed on the water bills. The water bills, I am the point of contact for all of our water customers. If they have a concern, they call here, right? We will be following up with a letter that explains in, what should I do, et cetera, et cetera. It's a full-page letter. I'll have it reviewed by council. It will be reviewed by the board. It will be published to you. But it was not because your water was bad. We just didn't do the report on time.
And you just wrote this up wrong is what you're saying.
We're going to add to, we're going to go above the TDEC standard in reporting. That is the TDEC standard. So, that's it. Now, that situation is closed. Be mindful that you will, every water... Be mindful that you will, every water customer in this system will soon receive a letter that will better explain. It has my email, my phone number, and me as the point of contact if you want to elaborate. That's where we're at. And again, I will be public with you. I don't know where we're at 40 years back. I have no idea, but I am seeking that information. If I am informed of violations, the public will be notified immediately. And lastly, I will reelaborate, I am 1,000% confident in the ability of the public work staff now. That's all I'm gonna say. Now, moving on, several good things are happening in town. We talked about the status of our water and sewer projects. We were moving forward on a lot of different things. More initiatives to come up as the board and I go into two different phases. Number one, the strategic and comprehensive plan that you'll be hearing about pretty soon to look out 1, 3, 5, and 10 years from now for the town of Bluff City. And then we'll have several events, which have not been announced or decided on tentative for this year. That is my report. What are your questions to me?
I, I don't have a question, but I've got something I'd like to add to that, Jeff.
Okay. Well, is this something we can take offline so we can continue?
Yes, yes.
Just see me after the meeting.
Well, I, um.
Go ahead, Brian. Might as well.
The lady that owns Bluff City Downer has been like.
Kristi? Yeah?
Uh, Saturday, uh, Saturday, we went down Lake Diner and I kept feeling something that's missing from the town. And I said, Kristi, what days are you closing? She said, Monday and Tuesday. I said, is there any way that we could put a farmer's market right here in Bluff City and run it out of your park lot on days you're close? She said, I'd love it. And she said, I would support it and feed the food to my customers.
Thanks for that suggestion. Now, we'll move on. Yeah, we'll move on and like I say, we'll, after we adjourn the meeting, we can talk more, okay? We've got business to do, if you don't mind. All right, moving on, report from Town Attorney, Mr. Fry.
I don't have a report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. Next item on the agenda, discussion and action, the financial report from RCMFO, Ms. Sharon Green.
Fund balances, January 31st, 2023. General fund, $2,341,207. Sanitation fund, $24,316. Police fund, $924. Debt service fund, $152,696. Sinking fund, $3,094. Water sewer fund, $839,430. Total fund balance, $3,361,667.
Thank you, Madam Recorder. In hearing the fund balances, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman Adams.
My second.
Second by Alderwoman Madison. Madam Recorder, take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Venable?
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Key?
Yes.
Adam, Alderman Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next are the department reports. First on deck is Chief Greg Depew, Police and Public Safety.
Good evening, Mayor, board members and citizens. Okay, for the month of February, we responded to 190 calls, issued 148 citations, had 59 warnings, patrolled 5,997 miles, had 23 arrests, 18 offense reports, 18 alarms, 13 accidents, had four domestics, three DUIs, three drug violations. Everything else is going great. Our Watson system, of course, is up and running. It's fabulous. It's better than I ever thought it would be. It's so much easier to get, not just taking some from 15 to 17 minutes, it's taking traffic stops to four to six minutes. Not only that, just to provide a better service for the citizens when they come in to get reports and things like that, it's much easier, much more professional to do that. So very pleased with all that. Everybody's working hard and addressing the issues we have, like Lakeview Drive. An email has already been sent out during this meeting about our concerns and issues there and patrols will be stepped up, radar will be, you'll see us down there quite a bit. We get some stuff straightened out and we'll do everything we can to take care of that and take care of our citizens. But I'm happy with all the, the workers. Everybody's doing good. Thank you all. Things are going great and everything's great. Any questions or concerns?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Mr. Multrie?
Good evening, Mayor, board.
Good evening.
When it comes down to the water plant, the water plant is operating normally, pumping an average of 223,000 gallons per day. The water plant was shut down on February 9th during water tank maintenance. Once maintenance was completed, the water treatment was put, placed back into service in order to fill the storage tank. When it comes down to the distribution system, we are continuing to repair leaks in our distribution system as they show. We've installed One Tap and repaired two damaged setters during the month of February. During the tank maintenance, we purchased water from Bristol Bluff. Water tank will be placed back into service upon negative bacteriological testing and meeting the required holding time. So we should be back in service come Friday. When it comes down to the sewer department, the sewer department is operating well with there being no overflows in the month of February. We did get the high well level alarm during the last couple rain events, but that did not result into overflows. So that is going great. In the street department, city workers are working hard to maintain the brush pickup throughout town. Our designated day once again for brush pickup is on Wednesdays and Thursdays with work orders being top priority. When it comes down to the lead and copper testing, all of our testing did come back as negative. The only issues we did have is reporting it to the citizens. After those tests are taken, we are supposed to take those results back to each citizen that those, um, samples were taken and that was one of the things that we kinda screwed up on, to be quite frank. But other than that, the drinking water all throughout town is great. Other than that, no other issues regarding that. So I mean, there is no reason to be alarmed when it comes down to lead and copper. But I do understand your concern with it being such short time, but we did just recently get this notice, so I don't feel that you all were misled or anything like that. We just recently got this news. But if you all have any further questions, feel free to ask and I will try to answer them according to.
So there's no concern?
No concern.
Okay, okay.
No concern.
Nobody drank any water with lead or copper?
No one drunk any water with lead and copper.
And to be clear, the only thing was, is it just wasn't recorded, right?
It just wasn't recorded in the proper fashion.
That is exactly right.
Thank you.
And just to add to Alan's wonderful brief, I mean, this is something that we had to get to the public right this second.
Right, right.
We, we cannot Terry when TDEC calls.
Right.
And like I say, you will, this board and this administration and our council, will see the letter that's laying squarely on my desk right now and it will be reviewed by council and it'll be published to our citizens and it will be a very detailed explanation of what did and did not occur, but the water system was never endangered.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just want to thank you for your good minute, Alan.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
All right, moving on, I do not see any District 5 Sullivan County Commissioners, so we'll move on to board comments. Julie, will you start, start the bid?
Will ya? First of all, the picture out here of Irene Wells, the picture of Irene Wells, you know, when you come in?
Sure.
I think it should be placed over what people naturally call City Hall, where you pay your bills, because more people will see it. The only people that's gonna see it there is us and the few people that walk in is here. I don't think that's the proper place to put it, personally. I think it should be put where people can see it.
Will consider that.
I think the family would appreciate that. I know I would, you know? And also, I think the videos of the meetings should be posted two to three days afterwards because people start, I mean, I don't know how, how long it takes to do it, but by what I've been told by a lot of people, that it's taken a long time. I mean, days, if not weeks sometimes. I don't know. I'm just saying that's what I've been told and if that is, I don't think that, that's good, you know? Because a lot of times people can't come to the meeting for whatever reason, you know? So they like to see what's going on and they don't want to wait for weeks, you know, and see it on the news or the, hear it, you know, or something. And the, the, um, when the, the paper that you gave us to read about the city manager at the workshop or whatever you wanted to call that, I could not find it on there where it stated that the city manager had, had, I, all I seen is where it stated that he had authority to basically fire anybody. We were all told that he can't fire the salary people, like Sharon and stuff, and I don't under, I couldn't find, I, maybe I'm reading it wrong?
Yeah.
Because I want to make sure these people can't get fired if they have a little difference, but I could not find it the way it was written.
Well, that's something we could definitely work on.
Because if it's not going to be written like that, I will not vote for it.
It's a, it's, it's in the charter squarely, Julie. And the description that you saw the other day, the excerpt is complete from the charter. I mean, it's there. So if you'd like to, next time we have workshop, we can make that a point or we can sit down individually or Mr. Fry.
So you say, are you, what are you saying? Is it in there and I keep missing it somehow?
Yes, ma'am, you do.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to get, oh, Ms. Trausch, what to you if you like.
Maybe we need a workshop.
If anybody has a question, come.
Yeah, he's a, he's very easy to reach. We did not take one thing away from the charter. Zero.
Did y'all read it?
I, I just found it. I keep hearing my name mentioned. Does somebody have something they want to say to me?
I, I think the board's in discussion.
The man asked you a question.
Okay.
Okay, that's, no, the board is in discussion.
Now, I've let y'all talk and let's just let the board discuss what we're discussing.
Well, I just want to make sure, you know, it, it's wrote like it's, or like we've been told it's going to be wrote, is what I'm saying.
Very good.
I just, that's all, I want to make sure it's clear.
Maybe we can have another workshop and just go over everything again.
That, uh.
I have some questions.
We will have our customary workshop the last Tuesday of this month and we'll definitely make sure we put that on.
Move forward with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sandy?
I want to thank everyone for coming. If y'all got something to say to us, please feel free to say it.
All right, that's.
Hello, everybody. First of all, I will say, I will continue to be a true, honest voice for the people. I hear you when you speak. I know there was citizens wanting to get the comment session twice, during the beginning and towards the end. Okay, we got that done. Wanted the videos. They may not be posted yet, but we got that done. So we are moving forward, maybe not fast enough, but it takes time because, honey, we've come a long ways and Bluff City, we aren't through yet. And if you need me, please feel free to reach out to me. But I do not take calls where it comes to gossiping and talking about people. I, I don't fool with that. I don't have time for that. I will stand up for what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ben?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. Really appreciate you bringing up the Lakeview Drive. My mom lives on Lakeview Drive. I'm on that road a lot and yes, there is a lot of bad characters that are flying up and down that road. I've been in near accidents quite a few times, so I'm glad you brought that up and hopefully we get that addressed because that is a serious problem. I mean, that, I grew up on that, in that house. Mom's been there for 43 years and, and literally in the past year, it has gone crazy. So thanks for bringing that to attention. Very relieved that I've not been drinking copper and lead.
Yeah, everything's okay.
So very happy about that and, you know, I hope everybody recognizes the progress on the water system that is being made. Water's always, has been a very important issue in this town and we're, we're doing the best we can to address it and I'm very excited for our treatment facility to get the upgrades that it needs and I think, once we get that completed, we're gonna be in really good shape when it comes to our water.
Absolutely.
Everybody drinks water now, not drink water.
All right, thank you, Ben.
We're not gonna drink water.
Thank you, Ben. All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, members of the board, is there any old business?
Just that we are going to continue to move forward concerning city manager, but we still got quite a bit to do, but we are moving forward.
Very good. Any other old business to discuss? Is there any new business to discuss?
Well, I, I have something to say to that. Yesterday, I came in here to ask if I could have the minutes to the last board meeting and I was told that you said we did not have to get them before the meeting.
They were sent to you?
No, I'm not saying they weren't. I'm just telling you what I said. And no, they weren't sent to me the day before. And I come and she took, don't you, I know what I heard. I would never lie.
Okay, now, okay.
But I hate for somebody to say they're lying.
It's all right, Julie. Did you not receive the minutes?
Yes, I did, but I came in here and they said, and you said.
I said that Friday. You came in on Friday and I said.
Okay, Friday, either way, you said, he said.
I defended myself before you found the line.
Okay, now, okay.
I did not send in your packet three days before.
Yeah, they.
You said, we do not have to send them.
That's enough.
You said Jeff said he did not have to send them out at all.
Okay, apparently now, there was a, it sounds like there was a misunderstanding. The, in the agenda must by ordinance go to you three days in advance of the meeting. That did happen. We did have, we were Friday finalizing the minutes of the last meeting. We were doing that.
And I told you that.
On Friday. So they were sent as quickly as they could to you. We are not required by ordinance to send you the minutes three days prior. We tried to do that. We had some employee absences and we didn't have them ready until Friday. You received the minutes on Monday, so that's what I said.
I am not a liar and I told you.
Okay, now, that's, that's good, that's all right, Janine.
Well, what you just said, he just said it two different things.
Well, okay, but anyway.
That's all I have to say.
Whenever possible, we will get you the minutes at minimum three days prior. I try to get them before then, but we had some absences and we had to, and we have been, as of late, the principal clerk has been very careful to draft the minutes for my review because we want to make sure that they're 100% accurate to the tape. So we'll do them a couple of times. So if there's any fall, it's on me because I want to make sure that when you do get the minutes, they're perfect.
I don't. The timeline ain't as necessarily important to, as being told that you, I was told that the mayor, Jeff, said he does not have to give them to you.
That is not, I think you may have misunderstood.
Okay, when Wanda Phillips comes, ask her.
If you were told that, Alderwoman Venable, I apologize. But the fact of the matter is, the minutes do not have to be sent out according to the ordinance three days prior, only the agenda. So that is the clarification.
I guess what my problem was, we're used to getting it all at once.
Right. We, just like any other organization, have absences.
I understand that.
And we endeavor as a staff to support you as best we possibly can, but I, I refuse personally. personally to send you something inaccurate or something that I have not personally reviewed and took time to look at it. So, that, I apologize that they weren't there the previous week. We are not required to send them by law, but we will endeavor moving forward to get them out with your packet the previous week, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other new business? Hearing none and seeing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.